Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our February 13th council meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order at seven o'clock. You have the agenda before you. Is there any additions?
Adam, there. Administration has no additions.
Okay, thank you. Could I have someone move the agenda, please?
I'll move it.
Counselor Lambert, all in favor? Carry. I'd like to call upon Staff Sergeant Ogunon. Is this your last one? Sorry for standing you up today.
No problem. Yeah, I don't want to come across as the wrong way, but hopefully it's the last one. Just hoping that the new commander is here. It's gonna be to the wire, I think, whether or not he's gonna be in high level by now. I'll give you an update on that.
Okay. So, welcome tonight.
Thank you very much. The current stats were provided there. I think everyone had. Sandra, you got them in time, did you, or?
I received them at 3:36, and I think I overlooked them. I just pulled them out now.
Oh, no problem.
I apologize for that, but I stopped them out very good.
No problem. That's got to you fairly late there. I'll go through some of the stats then. So in January, we had a total of 416 calls for service, which we responded to. That's really on par with what we've had previous years at the same time of the fiscal year. Traffic collisions, 21. Provincial traffic offenses, 28. Six impairs. Provincial statutes, we had 53. That includes Liquor Act, 901 Acts, trespass, liquor, child welfare, Corners Act, and mental health. Isle bylaws, two. Public mischief, one. Possession of cocaine, two. Sexual offenses, three. Horrific communications and uttering threats, 16. Assaults, 29. Thefts, five. Theft of vehicles, two. Mischief, 103, which is up there. So mischief can be damage to property. It can also be someone who's obstructing the enjoyment of property. So a lot of the times, it'll be used for people that are causing disturbance within their house instead of public. Well-being checks. We completed 20 votes and then just ran files, 12 assisting other police forces or other agencies. We had 136 prisoners in January, which again is on par with what we've seen in previous years for January. And then I went over the complement that we have here. So typically, we have 19 regular members that are assigned to high level. In the previous quarter, we were running with 15. We're now running with 14, which isn't great. We have four of the five NCO positions are vacant. So I'm not including myself in there since I am assisting from the district office and have been doing that since October. So we have one corporal that is still here and the other two corporals are vacant. Sergeant is vacant and the staff sergeant, the staff sergeant position as well, that means vacant. All but we have named who that person is. I've mentioned before, Devron Ditmer, who at time fought slave for four million and is currently in Swan Hills. So he isn't having to sell a house. He's able to leave for us. How he can come up here, it's just the medical that has been holding him up. He has got his northern medical completed. We're hoping that will be signed off in the next couple of weeks. Then his relocation will kick in. So I'm hopeful he'll be here in March. I'm really hopeful he'll be here by mid-March because I have to enforce leave. I have a bunch of hours I have to use up. So maybe I should take some time off before the end of the fiscal year, which is March 31st for us. So I'm hoping he will be here, and he's quite excited to get here as well. So he's really been pushing everything, trying to get through as quickly as he can.
So if he's not here?
Then we'll have to find some other solution, or I might have to get a allowance or exemption to allow me to stay here and not have to use up that leave. Because it's not fair to leave out a more person. Sam Bolm is the only corporal that is here. He's in an acting sergeant position. And because we have those vacancies in the supervisory roles, that means it's constables who are stepping into those roles. So we've been bringing them into it gradually, instead of just throwing them at a desk and say, "Congratulations, travel up higher. Here you go." We've been breaking them into it slowly. So started them off with file reviews, then we started doing some court disclosure reviews, getting into the schedule. So it's piecemeal, so it wasn't something that was just going to overburden them right from the beginning, and it's worked fairly well. So instead of what has been done in the past of just congratulations, you're now this person, there's been some actual work on it, so we've been able to develop them.
So my question, I guess, is if a person applies for these positions here, they're already in the complement here, and they don't get the position here, but they get it in another community, what is the reasoning for that? Maybe that's not yours to say. Maybe that's something I need to ask K-division?
No, I think I can speak to that.
Okay.
And you can also talk to K-division. When they do an evaluation of who is going to be getting a specific position here, so a corporal position here that comes up, five people apply to it, one of them being local. It doesn't, the residency isn't a factor in that. It has to be on their knowledge, skills, ability. So that's what's reviewed, and from that, a decision is made. You could pretty much leave any of the other information out, name, location, any of that. We have to look at their competency examples to see what their experiences are, and then we weigh that against the other ones. And then from that, make a determination. So you could pretty much leave the names out of it, make your determination, and then you find out who that person is so that it's unbiased. And that is just the way it works. The RCP is across Canada. We have people applying from right across, from all the different divisions, from Newfoundland to B.C. and up in, coming down. They all have an equal opportunity to do it. In years past, it was based on the division that you were in, and then they changed that about six years ago so that anybody could apply to across the country. Can be frustrating. I get your point exactly. We've already got somebody here who may not only be competent, but is already doing the job in an acting capacity. Why wouldn't you just bump them into it? And it's because we have to be fair to anyone who applies to that position.
Even if there were no applications for that position?
If there were no applications?
Except the one here?
Then, and that's the thing, if there's no one who applies, then we have to go outside and start looking for people who are eligible to go into that, so we can invite people in. If one person is qualified and they apply, they get it.
I guess my point is if you're qualified in another community for the same position, why wouldn't you qualify at high level?
Well, you could be qualified. It's just who's the most qualified. So whether they are, because it might be that there's different people that have applied for this position as compared to Swan Hills, just because we had talked about it earlier. If five people have applied here and only two people down there, they're not competing against the same amount.
Thank you.
Yep. It's, it can be frustrating too, because we're across the country. A lot of times, it's based off of paper. And I think it would be very beneficial to be actually able to sit down with these people and have an interview, like most fields do. How many people will hire somebody without actually having to sit down? But we're a big country, and it's tough to get that. I don't even know what the cost of that would be. But it would be nice to see if we start doing those board applications. Kind of like what they're doing for detachment commanders now. Typically, if there's a new commander coming in, there's a community consultative group that comes together, and they will do the interviews of those people. And it's a collaborative decision, not only on their abilities and experiences, but also how does that interview go? And that's a portion of it.
Thank you.
The sergeant position and the two corporal positions that were vacant were advertised in January. They have closed. I don't have the results on it yet. So hopefully in the next week, then I'll find out how many people applied, how many. Is it going through the normal process, or is it going through promotion by exception, which is the process when there's someone who doesn't meet all the criteria that's established? So passing job simulation exercise score, competency validated, and enough time in the rank, then we can go the promotion by exception. There's an increase in that as well. We have one person that transferred out in December. We have one person who is transferring out in February. We have two that just received their transfer notices, so they're probably going to be gone by April 1st. We have a member that's been identified coming out of Rocky Mountain House. He was identified in the fall, cancelled his house, so that's holding him up. We have one member coming from Hinton. He's already received his transfer notice. We expect he'll be here by, probably for that first week of March. We have another person that's been identified here, but they won't be quite until July because that will be on the side of the person that's leaving, going to the Yukon. And then we have one of the corporals just sold his house last week, and he will be here by probably March 8th. So that's a little bit of good news for us, but it is constantly changing, right? I know it's not new to you. The faces change quite frequently, every three years. Got a maximum but people leaving, new ones coming in. And the last thing I just wanted to talk to you about is we're now doing the consultations for what we're looking for for our policing priorities for the next fiscal year. And last year, the priorities were coming up as, one of them, for example, was the amount of hours that were under the enhanced policing option number two, with the extra funding that you provided. And they wanted to track the amount of hours. And I look at them and go, okay, great, now we're gonna tell you how many hours we used, but wouldn't we accomplish during that? And I think that's definitely a failure in that reporting. Instead, I would like to see some things that, I had a discussion with your C.A.O., Clark had mentioned. How about foot patrols? How about contact with your local businesses? And I think those are important things, but I just wanted to bring it up now so that the next meeting, whether it's myself or Devron, who's gonna be here, and get your input on that as to what you would like to see reported on for the next year. Because I think, yes, we can keep track of the amount of hours that are used, but wouldn't we do with those hours? And I think the amount of foot patrols in the park, downtown core, how many contacts we had with the local business owners, those are things that are important. You want to know that money has been spent to those things. But that's my opinion, and I'd like to get some feedback from council on that. Maybe not tonight, but just kind of plant the seed, and then next time when we chat, we can go through that. And then also the other things that we want to track to, whether it's the contact within the community with the different agencies, our traffic, drug trafficking warrants that we go through. You'll see the stats come through for that here and there tonight. So I'll have those emailed out to you for the last quarter and also for the cumulative in the last few quarters. Because I think our root causes for climbing mean the same thing, is poverty, mental health, drug addictions, and alcohol. Those are the four that really we keep seeing in the community and need to adjust those.
Which brings me to the archive team. Is there any?
I have no idea, no. And from what I understand from the conversations I've had with district, it's still the AHSI. And I've heard that they might be lowering the standards for that person to come in and then provide additional training once they're in place. I'm hoping that's the case. We all know how hard it is to get people here. That's what we need to, we just need to get those people here and we can train them up. So I'm hoping that will happen. And then we've got to have some conversations with elder health services as well about their local peace officers. There's three peace officers here, and I don't see them. If there's any place that they need to be, it's not the street, it's not Fort Familiar, it's in high level. That's where the stuff is happening. So we need to get them on board and give us a hand. And that is it for me. There was a crew report. Unfortunately, I don't have it here. It's sitting on the printer at the detachment, so it's part of the report. You'll have a copy that you'll be able to read through.
We do have, but we don't have to open it.
What's that?
I did forward the email.
Perfect, okay.
Council has to open it for us, so.
Okay. My apologies on that.
That's okay.
If there's no questions, that is.
Counsel, any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening. I'd like to call upon Candice Silver, please, to give her presentation.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for this opportunity to address me. Let me introduce myself, Candice Silver. I am a parent volunteer speaking on behalf of not only my daughter, but also for all graduates attending HLPS. Allow me to share an idea to help celebrate the HLPS graduating class of 2023, subsequent graduating classes in our town as a sense of dignity and pride. I'd like to establish the first and annual Northern Silver Stars Silent Auction Raffle Charity Fundraiser for 2023. In regards to the name chosen, Northern, we reside in Northern Alberta. Silver, as individuals, we are already gold. Number one, we take care of ourselves. Let's go silver and start taking care of each other. Second best in our book, stars. You as individual, excuse me, sorry. Individuals are already stars. We all shine brightly in our own unique ways, so keep shining, stay positive. I graduated from HLPS in 2000. Coincidentally, our current mayor was also my grade eight teacher. Now, 23 years later, my second eldest daughter is also graduating. Congratulations to her and every other 2023 grad. We, the parents in town, applaud them. It has come to my attention that students and parents struggle with the hardships of volunteering to adequately fund and celebrate our children's achievements, so let's make it easier for them. Simply put, one annual fundraising event can improve the well-being of our children, community, and town. The only thing to begin with this wonderful process is only the town of high levels' letter of approval and/or support. This new fundraiser will help promote education and support future charitable projects. I'm thinking that fundraising revenue can be placed in a bank account trust fund that is jointly administered by representatives acting for the students, school, and town. Some parents were worried that this project would be too big for just the graduating committee to take on by themselves. So let's provide them with support they need. Let's involve the town. Let's go big. We will have to open a new bank account and appoint designments to administer it and seek volunteers to kickstart this event. Let's make a deadline, April 1st of 2023. Then every transaction from every business or personal donation that will be used to secure all graduates today. Excess funds will be helped support future graduates and the school, town, to improve facilities and activities available to our children. Let's say yes, so our children and future generations can celebrate with ease. There are three ways to fundraise locally: silent auction items, raffles, or simple cash or check donations. If done annually, I believe the program will accumulate too many items. Items already withheld can be reserved for the next year, and cash donations can simplify the process of asking for donations until they are solicited again. Potential donors can be approached by volunteers and/or correspondents with the school and/or town support. As of now, I believe the HLPS grad committee currently has available $10,000 and likely needs a total of $30,000 to celebrate the 22/23 graduating class. So we need to fundraise now, and hopefully we can exceed targets so excess funds can accumulate and help later grads in infrastructure improvements for our children. For my part, I think I can organize a silent auction and kickstart a raffle to aid in this endeavor. I have also provided a supporting document of obtaining an AGLC raffle license for fundraising over $20,000. Going beyond supporting our graduates, think about what our children in town really need. Any ideas? More recreational facilities. Let me suggest some for you. Indoor playgrounds, jungle gyms, indoor roller skating rink, East Link Center-like and G.P.-style swimming pool, water parks, courts to accommodate all types of sports such as tennis, badminton, basketball or volleyball, billiard tables for older kids, bowling, indoor golf, skating rinks, curling rinks, racetracks for track and field, gyms to exercise or do gymnastics, an indoor chaplain park, a go-kart track, indoor laser tag, BMX bike tracks, you name it. You can categorize and customize new buildings or different wings for different age groups. The possibilities are endless. I think the Alberta Lottery and Gaming Commission still accepts applications for financial support for community projects. I think there are sources of funding from the Government of Canada, versionations. We could look into these too. This being the first annual event, please allow me to provide you with a rough template if approved. The town school can build and improve the program its own way and smooth out the edges, someday explore new projects, and create potential job opportunities. Just ask yourself, as if we're about to play a game for gold, where are we from? High level. What do we want? Change. High level. Whose town future graduates can we potentially secure? High level. Whose community can we better? High level. Let's go Team High Level. Let's make a change and reach for the starts because we all shine in our own brilliant and unique ways. Just remember, we can amount to anything, to do good things for not only just ourselves, but for our communities, our town, our people, our children. So please, join me, and let's allow the town to give the stamp of approval and make a mark of our own for our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Candice.
You're welcome.
You're bang on. Like, we do need all these facilities, and we do need all these things for our children. I don't know if you are aware, but the town has been lobbying both levels of government for funding for a multipurpose evacuation center, which will house a lot of what you suggested there. We're waiting for grants from the government, and we continue to lobby. But it would be awesome if a community group went out and did that sort of thing for the community. I don't know if you're aware, but when you start trust funds and things, you have to have like a year's worth of minutes before, you know, places like the casinos will allow you to work there. So there, you know, like you have what a year-long process to do that? I guess, is the Fort Familiar School Division sanctioning this? Because I mean, I've been on the grad committees and I've worked for ads for 30 years, and I was under the understanding that they weren't having a dinner this year. Is that right?
No.
So what would all the money go towards?
Just what they need to pay for their celebration. I don't know what they need, but like for decorations and whatnot.
But also, like we do, like the town does offer a grant for students. And I think the grants are, the applications are coming out in February when the kids go back to school, like right after teachers convention. And just about every business in this town does give a grant towards students from our community. So the students can apply for numerous grants from us. And the town itself provides one with NADC, which is about $4,000 every year. So yeah, we have a lot of that going on. We can't fundraise as a town, like for the Fort Familiar School Division or the high school?
I would suggest only the parents doing the work, the bulk of that side of the work on the town.
And do they have a fundraising committee?
They do, and it lacks support. It really does. I see like maybe attending people, if we're lucky. I see two or three students that come every grad meeting. It's quite small.
Well, we do have a council initiative, and it's usually about $300. Like, I mean, the town probably would be happy to donate that towards the grads and future grads. And I know we do a lot to put up the banners and giving ice surface donations, so. But if you're looking to fundraise for the town, I applaud you. And if you can get a group together, the town, I'm sure, would have no trouble supporting it. But once again, you would have to form a society, and you would have to apply to the Society Act, and you'd have to have a board of directors as well as a year's worth of minutes. Is there any other questions from council?
All right.
Yes?
Um, so I just want to understand, like, what type of support are you actually looking for from the town? I get that you want a sort of centralized ongoing entity that then can be the holding place for this fund specifically for the graduating class, correct? I know the mayor said that there's a lot of contributions for students who are moving on to secondary and grants and that sort of thing. But what you're looking for is specifically something to maintain and have like a well-established graduation celebration program every year?
Yeah.
If there's leftover funds, they would stay? I think that, yeah, having that, sort of that entity of a nonprofit organization. But are, but from the town, are you looking for us to be supportive in principle with letters, or?
Well, say if it was approved, and you guys did go about it. I would say start small and gradually work your way up, or set a, set amount for the grads every year. And then, since it's gonna be a charitable thing as well, the grads would vote on, graduating class would vote on a charity, right? Set an X amount for a charity, right? And then as it grows over time, you can increase it. You know, just slowly build it.
We would need someone in charge of that, though. And that's where the, where the group would have to get a society number because the town cannot give money to anything that's not a society. Or support anything, like if it was Crystal Mack Tears Fund, you know, to hold in trust for the future grads in the community, we couldn't do that unless I formed a society with a group of people. But the town is certainly supportive. And, you know, if you get this started, I'm sure everybody sitting here would agree that it's a good thing to do. But once again, we are supportive of the grads, you know, with our own bursary, with the money that we donate to the arena so that the grads can use the floor. That's very good. Is there any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. All right, you have before you the minutes of the December 12th regular council meeting. Didn't we have one down? Is that a mandate mistake?
It's not time to be here, but we're still transitioning here in New York.
The last meeting would have been January 23rd. January 23rd.
So the January 23rd minutes are the agenda, correct? It's a mirror.
Yes, I'm reading the agenda. Sorry. So could someone move the January 23rd minutes, please? Counselor Jessamyn, all in favor? Carry. Could I have someone move Staff Sergeant Ukanos' report, please? Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Carry. Is there any discussion with the High Level Grad Committee request? I wouldn't want to make a motion.
I can make a motion to move.
To move what?
The presentation as information.
Okay, all in favor? Carry. My report, Boreal Housing. We had a meeting, made some changes to existing policies to ensure they comply with the new Housing Act, changes to the tenant responsibility, changes to the tenant transfers and medical allocations. And there was discussion around the continuing movement of social houses and SRH houses from the floodplain to the subdivisions. On February 7th, we had an executive CRAA meeting. February 7th, also, we had a housing meeting with Minister Nixon. He was here to announce 3.5 million that the province is putting into renovating the McKenzie House for assisted living. Boreal Housing discussed with the minister the voluntary standards of assisted living, which he had not had a chance to review yet. And we discussed whether there would be new money coming to provide 4.5 hours of client care if the Alberta Government did approve the standards of care and he didn't know. Discussions also, we discussed the fact that since 2020, Boreal Housing has requested close to 1.2 million from the residents of this region for requisition for a facility that we cannot use. So we were asking the minister if they could replace that money. At the town of High Level, you were all there. We discussed basically the same thing again. And the town was once again respectfully requesting that Boreal Housing be provided funding to cover its expenses that it's incurring when it doesn't have clients. Tri-council. Secretariat were drafting a letter to the Minister of Municipal Affairs requesting authorization to have more than one counselor on the LARB or CARB hearing panel. We also discussed volunteerism from the three municipalities. At that time, there were only 17 letters of support from businesses. This is a support from the entire region and I do believe that letters were sent to the businesses because I did discuss it with Cheryl Welke, one of them. So I don't know, did it go up on our webpage? Mr. Schnard, can you answer that? About the Winter Games, the letter?
Uh, yes, the survey?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, went out on our social media last week. And what would that mean?
So we're looking for 2,000 to 3,000 volunteers between High Level, La Crete and Rainbow. We're looking right now for support because if there isn't any support, there's no sense bidding on these games. And, yeah, oh, sorry, in Fort Pomillion. So these games will be spread out over the municipalities depending on whether we bid for the summer or the winter games. And then today, we had a meeting with the CRAA, which is the Community Rail Alliance. We now have 21 members, municipalities that is, with CAP now joining. So we will have CAP, agriculture and forestry all on board for our rail alliance. We're doing presentations. One was done last week at RME. There will be one at NEO and there will be another one at Alberta Municipalities in March. We did get a phone call from the consulate of Japan. Mitsubishi is considering building a plant in the heartland of Alberta and they're reconsidering if the rail service is so difficult. So they're, they're keeping in touch with us. We do have meetings planned with Minister Gatson, Michelle Evans, who is Prairie Kings, and a array of ministers in Ottawa that haven't confirmed yet. And that's my report. If there's any questions, I'll try and answer them. Can I have someone move my report then, please? Counselor Libron, all in favor? Carry. Deputy Mayor?
On February 7th, attended the same meeting with Minister Nixon and on February 8th, Tri-council.
Counselor Anderson?
She's been January 25th, attended a library board meeting, basically discussing their policies and renewing them and updating. February 7th, meeting with Minister Nixon as well. February 8th, Community Education Council meeting. So the Northern Lakes called, a little report on them. They have a trailer over there that's set up for a construction building. And they also have their, or their indoor setup for welding. And both courses are full. And they're looking at setting up a second course for both. So that's a good, good thing. They're starting to get quite busy over there, which is nice to see. And then on February 8th, also attended the Tri-council meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, those are all our students from here. Counselor Jessamyn?
I have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Counselor Lambert?
On February 2nd, I attended the final meeting 101. And on February 6th, I attended the Chamber of Commerce meeting. They are discussing, setting a meeting with council and see what direction they want to go in the future. A few other things, just working on their revision statement similar to what we did in our...
Teaching plan?
Switching plan, yeah, exactly. And then on February 7th, I also attended a meeting with Minister Nixon. Happy to hear he was able to provide the funding and hopefully pull a few more strengths.
Get it done, Pastor?
Yeah, that is all I have to report.
Thank you. Counselor Libron?
On January 25th, I attended the library board meeting as well. February 2nd, finished up with the Union 101 course. And February 7th was the meeting with Minister Nixon and on February 8th was the Tri-council meeting.
Thank you. Counselor Welke? No.
On January 31st, I attended an FASD board meeting. And on, so in February, the meeting with Minister Nixon and Emily Dan Williams at McKenzie House, which was a great meeting. And February 8th, our Tri-council meeting with our neighboring municipalities. And one night I found very exciting that night was the talk of meeting face-to-face with our municipal counterparts in Fort Nelson, across the border in B.C., to talk about transportation routes and highway access and back to those talks that have been on the, kind of on the back burner for a while. So it looks like it may be possible in the near future to actually meet with those groups over there, like our southern municipality groups apparently meet regularly with their neighbors in B.C. We haven't really had that privilege. So that, so that I found was a nice development and that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Counselor Welke. Before we adopt these minutes, I want to jump back in here. I forgot to say that I did have a meeting with Chief Ukanusa and he is interested in reviving the SETI meeting. So I would like to ask administration to please reach out to his administration to have a first meeting here at the town hall between the two councils so that we can show him and them what we have done towards the multipurpose evacuation center as well as the regional emergency plan. So, yes, so whatever time works for the two councils.
We'll reach out to Jordan and their administration.
Okay. Could I have someone please accept the council report? Counselor Lambert, all in favor? Carry. Council action list, is there anything anyone wants to discuss? Could I have a mover then? Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carry. Upcoming events? Get your three-on-three hockey teams ready. Do you have anyone?
No, I don't know. I won't be here.
You're not going to be here?
On February 24th, 25th, I think, please.
Okay. Any discussion? No, could I have someone move that, please? Counselor Libron, all in favor? Carry. The monthly reports to council?
Madam Mayor, if there's anything the council has questions on, the directors can answer that.
I just have a question for Director Raw. On February 28th is the last, is the day that we put in for the ground?
Yes, for the GICD, yes.
Okay, do we need a new letter from the Denny?
I already have it.
Oh, you do, okay, good.
I have a chief resolution. Can I ask for it?
Okay, because he didn't know what he was signing. Also, okay, any... I have a question for Mr. Stroh, Director Stroh, please. Where is the asbestos in the airport facility?
So Madam Mayor, there, four years ago, I think, or more, we sampled the building. So we have asbestos in the tile. It's a vinyl floor tile, commercial tile, and it's in the tiling. So if you want to remove the floor tile that's in the old department terminal, then we have to deal with that. We are looking at doing some renovations with one of the clients and the intent is not to remove it, just to go forward or save a lot of time and money. It's safe unless we disturb it and it's the rule that causes the issue.
Okay, thank you. I thought it was in our new part. Is there any questions from council? Yes?
I have a question for Director Raw. Just regarding the swim pool. Have we, are we still low with staff over there?
Yes, we are.
Yeah, okay. Just regarding the swim times and everything, I just have a lot of members of the public come up to me and ask if there's going to be any changes in the future regarding swim times, especially public swim and family swim. Especially, I noticed in the report with the numbers there that there's a lot of available times for other things versus public swim. Even family swims, they're pretty low compared to a few of the other ones. And then compared to the attendances as well, there's quite a few for those versus the other ones. So do something to look into.
The public swims, they're so well-intended. We have to have like fully guarded all the time. So almost always have to have three lifeguards there or limit the people coming in. And even then, especially the sponsored ones, we're already limiting by the door even with the three lifeguards.
Yeah.
So, and we have basically three full-time staff. So until we bring up that complement, it's really hard. We're stuck to the five days and they're constantly trying to make it so we can still have swim lessons, still have some late swims, still have some acupin. So it's a real challenge to stay open. And there's a lot of other pools that are cutting even more days down than us across Northern Alberta and Canada. It's just a really, it's really tough right now. We are excited to be, we have a new supervisor that brought another full-time staff. We're still short one other full-time person and we usually have lots of casual. We lost those three years with COVID of bringing in the kids from the school and moving them through. So that's one of the new programs that they're running is for the, I think it's called Rookie Patrol, for the 10 to 13-year-olds to try and start even younger. So by three years from now, we should be open. Hopefully sooner, like seven days a week, we can be running more public swims.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
I will go to everyone. So I have another question for Director Schmidt. I noticed that there's only 12 calls listed here, but there's 31 at the top, is that an error?
Oh, can you report them?
Yeah.
No, it's just, I just highlight calls. I don't do, I don't give you a breakdown of every call that we occurred. So I don't, I didn't bring my full staff to give you the calls. It's just like, these are some of the highlighted calls.
Oh, okay.
We've got several vehicle collisions. You know, there's other mixes in there, including alarm calls and medical calls and that kind of stuff. If you wish to do a full breakdown, I can easily do that every month.
No, 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 I was just wondering if there was a, like, because it said 31 calls and then there was only 12 there.
Yeah, no, we just highlighted a few.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions? Could I have someone move the report, please? Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Carry. Health and safety. Welcome, Mr. McLean.
It's kind of asleep, sorry. Evening, good mayor council.
Good evening.
So our external core audit, so Core Certificate of Recognition, those are done, can you do the screen?
Yeah. I just have a question before you start. Are we still following COVID protocol for health and safety?
In which regard?
In the regard that they didn't come in to do their internal audit because of COVID guidelines?
Right, so that was still, AMSA didn't require onsite auditing. They allowed the transfer of all the files, Zoom, interviews, stuff like that, and the observational tours, which is something you kind of really need to be there to see. This is the last year they allowed that. So going 2023, any external audits that will be done in 2023 will be subject to onsite data collection.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. I'll throw it out there.
Sorry.
So audits are done on a three-year cycle. Years one and two are internal, the ones that I typically do. Third year is an external audit certification. So they make sure that everything that we're reporting is up to par. 2022 was our third year in that. And as such, AMSA, Alberta Municipal Health Safety Association, selected Northern Sunrise County to do our audit for us. In that audit, there were 234 files across 10 elements. There was 25 employee interviews conducted. They take all that information, they throw it into the audit tool that they have, and we scored 96%. That is a very good score for an external audit. That's the highest, that's the highest external audit we've had. The biggest concern that the auditors had, they were worried because they were reporting something so high that they were going to get automated based on audits. Good, good problem to have. A lot of work went into that by everybody, everybody here. So it's fantastic. From that audit, they found 13 strengths and 10 suggestions for improvements. So those suggestions for improvements, I broke them down. 80% of them, eight of the 10, were from the employee interviews. So essentially, during those interviews, employees couldn't satisfactorily to the audit answer a question. Doesn't necessarily mean they could know anything about it. They just didn't know enough for them to be comfortable saying yes or no. The 20% was basically a documentation of process-related suggestion for improvement. So from those suggestions for improvement, we created an audit action plan. That right now is at about 46%, 46% complete at the time of this meeting. That right now is at about forty-six percent, forty-six percent complete at the time of this meeting. So just quickly go through each element, just so you know when we're talking about element one, what kind exactly that entitles, or entails, sorry. Mandate leadership, organizational commitment, deals with the health and safety policy. What are employees know about that policy? Their responsibilities as established by the town, as well as occupational health and safety. And deals with mandate leadership. How well do they demonstrate and participate in the leadership of the health, safety and energy system? We did good there, ninety-six percent we achieved. Four percent was missed. One strength and two suggestions for improvements for that element. Element two, hazard assessment. There's a lot of information to review in that one. Basically, you take every position the town has, you look at every single thing that they do with that position. You come up with the health hazards, the safety hazards, you rank those according to risk. It also deals with reporting hazards. So how we go over reporting a new hazard, they look at all that stuff. There's like, I think there's fifty-six job hazard assessments they would have to review. So we did good there, ninety-six, ninety-six percent. Four percent, four percent missed with one suggestion for improvement. Hazard control, so based on all the hazards that we find with everyone's job, we have to come up with controls for those, whether it's engineering, whether it's administrative or personal protective equipment. We establish those controls. They want to know if our employees are using those controls, if they know about those controls. There's also some preventative maintenance in there. If Haley, if you're listening, I'm not sure if you are, not for education, but.
She's not.
Oh, she's not, okay, well, I tried. The, so preventative maintenance, the asset manager was a huge help. Poured out a couple things, had all your maintenance, that was done in vehicles, facilities maintenance. It was, you pull that report and you hand it off, it's, it was such a good tool for this audit, it was fantastic. We did really well there, actually, it was ninety-one percent and one hundred percent missed. Three strengths, two suggestions for improvement. Element four, health, safety committees. Deals with confirming if there's actually a committee, if there's legislative requirements are meant for that, if there are trainings there, how we address employee concerns, and how we bring any concerns we have or employee has to the CIO. Ninety-eight percent, two percent missed. Strengths and SFI's were one piece on that one. Qualifications, orientation and training, that's pretty straightforward. That's our new hire selection, making sure we're vetting the right people for the right job. If the orientations are covering all the essential occupational health, safety, material they need to have, and job-specific training. Really well on that one, ninety-eight percent and two percent missed on that one. Two strengths, one suggestion for improvement. Element six, dealing with contractors and visitors, one hundred percent. Others are really happy with how we monitor people coming in and out of our sites. No, no SFI's there. Inspections, please, Alex Swentor there, they were really happy with that. You guys get those inspection notes every month, facilities. You know, our supervisors and managers are really good at making sure that those are, making sure those are in. Element eight, emergency response, another good element, ninety-seven percent. Basically, it deals with putting at each facility's emergency response plan, much like the one you guys went over here when we did our orientation. They went over the pool, there's one for the arena, there's one for water treatment plant. But all of the different emergency response plans, each facility is different, each hazard is different. Really, really well on that one. One-on-one for the strength and for the suggestion for improvement. Incident investigation is another good one. There were all been certain. Ninety-eight percent, two percent missed. And of course, that deals with, do we have a policy, a direction, procedure for recording incidents? Do people know how to use it? Are they using it? Are people trained in the investigation process? Are we developing your causes of corrective actions or tracking those? It all deals with that, a lot of information about and review as well. And element ten, system administration. How well the management is communicating health and safety to everyone overall, right? It starts with the CIO, the directors, managers, supervisors, ninety-seven percent and a few percent. So that was a really good one there. One-on-one for suggestion for improvement, strength. So overall, our audits, despite whatever happened in 2016, there's a bit of a dip there, still passed. If you look at the dotted red line, that's our trend, that's our line of best fit. Our audits are continually getting better and better and better. Simply because we need more, again, we need more resource or something. You guys are allowing, these guys to have it and it trickles down through. And it really, it's really, really showing. I should have put the internal audit trend in there as well. It's a much steeper line. We're just getting better and better and better. Because we're allowed, well, we're being committed to, essentially. So it's really, really good. I can't, I can't say good enough about it, which is fantastic. The best part about these audits is there are awards. So this year, the awards were the high level, town high level engraved Yeti cups that we gave to all of our employees. And council should not be exempt from that, so those are for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, it starts from the top down, you guys from the top, break down to, break down to us, so thank you. Are there any questions?
So what happens when you hit the ceiling?
I'll make sure.
Or you're out of a job?
I'll make sure we're at nine hundred percent jobs.
Any questions from council?
Give me another cup.
Yeah.
Just good job.
Yes.
That's, that's on everybody here.
Great job to everybody then.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, the next one is the free application. What? Do you want me to note motion then? Can I have a motion to accept the report? Council Lambert, all in favor? Carry it. So the free up grant.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. So the Forest Resource Improvement Association of Alberta has released RFP again for 2023 under the Free Fire Smart program. The town had attended the, one of the information sessions regarding that program. We lost, utilized that program in 2019 for some vegetation management work for, by community park. That project was completed in 2021. And so we're now looking to council to get permission to apply for the 2023 grant. So this grant application would cover two projects, which would coincide with our update to our municipal emergency plan. So the first one is an update to the Town's Wildfire Preparedness Guide, mitigation strategy. And then the second grant application would be for tabletop exercise, potentially in the fall of this year, to exercise the new plan as it's, after it's built. So the FreeUp program fully funds the project, so there's no cost sharing. It's a one-hundred percent funded grant. So we already have the request for expression of interest ready to go. We have letters of support from Alberta Wildfire and Mackenzie County. Because we are going to, we're applying to include the annexation area in the new planning document. So we're not having to redo this once the annexation is complete. So we got a conversation with the administration of Mackenzie County and said, if we're doing the planning for the mitigation strategy and the preparedness guide, can we include the airport lands? At the same time, they thought that was a good idea. So we would include all of that into the new, the new plans. So the wildfire preparedness guide and mitigation strategy project is, I believe, seventeen, yeah, seventeen thousand is the grant, grant request, and the tabletop exercise is twenty thousand. So both of those would be submitted to FreeUp this week if council wants us to report.
Is there any questions from council? Yes.
Under a condition.
Any discussion? All in favor? Yes?
Next question.
No, we're done.
No, it's not, it's rather regarding the the application itself. Just regarding the fire smart plan, I was just reading through, I'm not sure if there'd be a question for Director Stroh or not. But just regarding the do's regard, when I was reading through it, it said that, I'm assuming this is updated 2019, last updated. But it did say that Alberta Agriculture and Forestry was responsible for the reclamation of the area. Was that like seen, seen through? I'm just wondering, like, is, what's the plan for this summer? Because it doesn't look like it was maintained well.
So, yes, so to clarify the reclamation piece over at Wildfire. So they reclaimed it to the level that they would normally reclaim on any other guard, which means rolling back the material and so on. So the 2019 Fire Smart Recovery Plan that you saw in here was an addition to our 2016 mitigation strategy to deal directly with the fire guard. So, so we did, working with operations, we had that area leveled, remultured, leveled over the course of twenty nineteen, fall of 2019 through entering into 2020. They seeded in 2021, I believe. And now we're just kind of monitoring it. So there is a mode that's going to be required this year. And actually, the undergrowth is taking, like, we, we take a look at it, the last, last year, the clover and fescue underneath is starting to take. But what we're seeing in the fire guard is some of the native grasses trying to take over again. So that's fairly easily managed with a combination of some burning and, and bringing the flame more in over the fire guard. So we anticipate that that shouldn't be too difficult to manage in the coming, in the coming spring. Of course, depending on, will be depending on our spring weather. If it gets too wet, it'll be too soft for Keith to get his crew in there. If there's any you want to add, Keith?
Yeah, it's pretty well summarized. The biggest thing for us is accessibility and having the right equipment down there and not sinking by the site. And so we'll have to see what we have for the appropriate equipment to go down there. We have a mode we have. We did float it down because there was a quantity of roots and trees and stuff still left in there. So we'll have to figure out what we can do with it, we have a mode we got. We'll see what we can do.
There's a test running on it this fall, so there's some areas where we can successfully burn it without affecting the undergrowth. So we'll look at some of those areas in our spring burning plan. And we have had conversations with the contractor about doing a reseed in 2024. If, if whatever we do this year doesn't seem to work, we'll just do an overseed again and try and let some of those, you know, those shorter grasses try and get hold. So it's like, it's going to be a work in progress over the next three years, trying to get it sorted.
There was just, yeah, definitely a lot of residents complaining about the past, the last summer, because the weeds were so bad. Overcoming onto the walking paths and everything as well. So just making sure on that. Perfect, thank you.
All right, the next one is the RFD with the Denny Dahl. Are you, doing that?
I'm just here to answer questions. This is actually the CEO of Casco's RFD. So they've been working with, CEO of Casco's been working with the Denny Dahl administration on the fire service agreement. It's being presented to council for approval to enter into the agreement. And then we'll go back to the Denny with regards to the service agreement. So it's a ten-year agreement. Some of the big changes that we have on the agreement, I would say big changes there, more kind of clarifications, remove the term rescue from emergency rescue services. It gives a little broader definition, which allows the Denny to determine a little bit wider scope of what they would like for emergency services from the town. As mentioned, the agreement's ten years versus the previous one is five. And as Denny Dahl First Nation is examining the feasibility of a fire service in Bushy River, there's a one-year termination clause in case they decide that they want to do everything on their own. So that has been put in there to allow them the flexibility they need. The increase in the annual base operation costs have been increased seventeen hundred and fifty dollars from the previous five-year agreement. And the capital expenditures from twenty to twenty-five, which brings us in line to the same, same as we're, same agreement we have with Paddle Prairie, Matisse.
Ten-year agreement, why has it been moved from five to ten?
That was, I don't even answer that, that was a decision between Clark and Jordan when they were looking at it. I guess it's just so they don't have to, we don't have to readdress this every five years.
And so the fees stay the same for ten years?
Correct. There is no inflationary, I don't think inflationary in the agreement.
You all have a chance to read the agreement. Everything's good. Could I have a motion, please?
Make a motion.
Council Jesselman? All in favor? All right, the next one is the RFD for the water, wastewater agreement.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Stroh, can I ask any questions the council has?
Is there any questions, council? Is there anything you want to tell us?
I would, through.
How, Deputy Mayor?
Sorry, we scheduled the dispute resolution. When it talks about Court of Queen's bench, which there is no such thing, well, it's Court of King's bench now. But it talks about non-binding arbitration. So you try and resolve it, you go to mediation, you go to non-binding arbitration, and then what? And I'm not suggesting that anything's going to happen. I'm just looking at this from, to review, to make sure it's got all of the proper terminology. And I guess litigation is always an option, but just non-binding arbitration, just if mediation hasn't worked, non-binding arbitration is essentially mediation.
I'll have to screen with you, Council, Deputy Mayor Langford. That's on the recommendation of our legal department, I guess. So if you have some clarifications, you can certainly take that back and clarify it with them. We do have other provisions within it that are restrictive to start with, so hopefully mitigate that end result. I think that's for when everyone just walks away in the end, but I don't think that'll ever happen. If there is some terminology you think we should review, we can certainly ring it back. By no means a legal expert at all.
Well, mediation, you're just trying to get the parties to essentially ground. Arbitration can give direction, but if it's non-binding, it's just really expensive mediation. Because in mediation, you're basically coming with some background informational arrest. In arbitration, like, it's a much more formal process. You're presenting experts in reports and the costs just go up exponentially. But for it to be non-binding, like, what's the purpose? Like, if one party just says, yeah, okay, we don't agree.
Do I agree?
I would just think that, you know, if the mediation hasn't worked, that it would be binding arbitration.
Just take a, determine non-binding.
Which is the same as mediation. But I wasn't, there is a difference between mediation and non-binding arbitration. Just that, you know, I wasn't obviously involved in the drafting of this. I just think that, you know, there's got to be some point where a determination is made. And, you know, if they're going to do non-binding arbitration and then do a court application, well, then the costs just go up exponentially again. So I just, to go back to Gwentland or whoever drafted this and say, you know, why non-binding arbitration, why not just binding arbitration? Just there's got to be a way of resolving things and.
Did you, did one draft this?
Yes.
I can't really.
We've gone over many versions of this. And I think it's in coordination with the Denny Dahl too, so make it usable, but certainly I'll bring it back in a minute and I'll bring that note up when it comes back.
And like I said, maybe there's valid reasons for it. And hopefully, we never get to this point, but it just, to go into sort of a non-ending. But it just, to go into sort of a non-binding legal quagmire, the cost just goes through the roof.
So can we table this till February 27? 27? Is that what you would like, Deputy Mayor? So I didn't want to.
Just so that we can get some clarification from council.
And you're right, it's Court of the King's bench.
It is, yes.
I can't imagine going down, making that mistake.
This is a precedent that's been around for a while, so just someone didn't update it, that's all.
What's that?
It's probably just a precedent that's been used before.
Because it does even state all of the arbitration, like how to follow arbitration underneath that, just.
All in favor? Carry. Thank you. So 13.4 briefing note.
Again. So, Madam Mayor, council, this briefing note is just kind of covering two things. There's been, there's two reports released by the provincial government in January with regards to the provincial EMS advisory committee review of the EMS system. The second report was was a review by Price Wirehouse Cooper on EMS dispatch. Longer report, less revealing. It had a lot of information on make call matrix codes and comparisons to international services and so on. Not really having a huge effect on us, but we wanted to, administration wanted to provide a report to council to make sure council's informed of where this EMS review from all the subcommittees that they had and covered over the past year of what this really means for high level. So I don't know, it's a long, I know my briefing note is very long, so I don't know if you want me to go through it in detail with you or if there's any questions that that council has. We wanted, we didn't go over all of the 53 recommendations, just the ones that really have something to do with the services being provided to high level and how it should affect them and how it should affect our MFR program.
Is there questions from council? I just have a couple, I guess. Like this, the pilot in Spruce Grove to use a fire department ambulance to assess treatment need be transport. Billing to AHS, is that true? They're actually going to bill AHS?
Yeah, so the key with the Spruce Grove pilot, and there's a reason I put this in here, so there's two other services in the province that are looking at this pilot. And so there's us and the MD Willow Creek, which as you saw that I released. In there, they have three ambulances that they provide for medical first response in their in their fire halls, their non-registered ambulances like ours that are in their fire halls for medical first response. So they've actually approached AHS about this pilot and said, this pilot's successful, can't we do it? So the difference between Spruce Grove and fire services like ourselves and MD Willow Creek is that Spruce Grove is an integrated fire EMS service. So their fire department is providing the ambulance service to the city of Spruce Grove. So they're actually using their spare ambulance, which is a registered ambulance for that medical first response. And then they have two paramedics on the ambulance, on that ambulance going to that medical first response call. So really what they're doing is sending the EMS crew, but not calling the EMS crew until they determine, because they're cross-trained. So then when they get there and go, okay, there's no ambulance available, we need to transport them, they log on to the EMS system and say, okay, we're in ambulance now. And then they take them to the hospital. So and then they can bill AHS for it. So we're looking at that pilot fairly closely and I've had some conversations with AHS about the pilot. They said it's actually looking successful. We said, well, what's the chances of rolling it out to services like ours that have that capacity? And they said that that's something that they would, they didn't say they would accept it, but they would look at it. The bigger, a big piece of this is that there is a couple of recommendations in this report around MFR funding. So. So a couple of sources in AHS have already indicated that, you know, and you can see the letter from Fox Creek in your package about the push on for the province providing funding for the MFR programs, which I know is important to our council, is important to our department as well, to make sure that they're covering the cost of those. So there is supposedly a proposed budget coming in, probably would appear for council to try and reinforce that with the provincial government for the next budget. But that combined with, you know, the ability for us to take part in something similar to the Spruce Grove pilot would probably be helpful to, you know, cover covering more costs of the MFR program.
So do we have qualified staff to do them?
Currently we do, yeah. Not not two per unit, but there are, there are legislation, there are legislative tools for us to be able to not have two paramedics on the truck. EMS is already doing that currently with having one EMR and one one paramedic.
So what what registered medical professionals do we have?
So we currently have one EMR, two paramedics and two registered nurses.
So they would make decisions of who can be treated treated on-site and who can be transferred?
Oh, where you make transport and treatment decisions normally on a scene as as it is in terms of referral, that wouldn't be done without medical directions. So if we decided on a scene that a patient did need to go to the hospital, there's a process that they have to follow, even the current paramedics. Like on EMS, like AHS or medical, they have to follow a process as well. So they have to phone medical directions, say, this is, a medical direction usually means the online, like physician with AHS. And they they give out the information to that doctor and then actually the doctor makes the decision, not the paramedic. So that we would, we follow that same process. But right now they're not allowing MFR services to do the treat and refer piece officially. We've done it a couple of times with online medical control in the past couple of years and phoned them and said, you know, you have an ambulance coming from Fort Millian? This guy has a cut on his hand, like he really doesn't need to go to the hospital, there's nothing wrong. So we go through the whole thing with him on on the radio and he, or on the phone and he goes, yeah, you're right, that's fine. We'll sign off that they don't have to go to the hospital and then we turn the handles around, we leave the scene, so.
And so they're also discussing going away from from Coreflex to making ambulances double up there?
Yeah. So that's one of the recommendations. And I mean, quite honestly, that's a, that's a huge problem, especially for high level. Both our ambulances are on Coreflex, that's why we're timing out three to four times a week.
That's a huge problem.
It's a very huge problem. The problem is, I don't know where we're going to get the paramedics to switch everybody to 12-hour shifts. So we're already adding 20 ambulances in the province and we're, you know, when you talk to, you know, the EMS union, which manages a large portion of the paramedics in the province. And they're saying they don't know where they're going to get the paramedics if they take everybody off Coreflex and move to 12-hour shifts. You're not doubling the amount of staff that you need on those Coreflex stations to be able to manage it. I just don't know where they're going to get the paramedics to do that.
Sounds like they're going to be making calls and who gets an ambulance and who doesn't.
Yeah, you just don't know. So, I mean, there's a lot of recommendations in here and they're not rolling everything out tomorrow. So, you know, I think they haven't, they've accepted the recommendations, but they haven't provided any timelines on on when they're rolling out any of the recommendations. So some of these might be goals to achieve and that Coreflex one is definitely one. I think, you know, they'll take the areas that are the most highly affected first and try and fix those first and then work their way through the progress or through the process. But I don't see, you know, by the end of 2023 saying, okay, nobody's on Coreflex anymore because they just don't have the staff to be able to do it. We're already sometimes down to three ambulances in this region, like in Mackenzie region alone, we've been down three ambulances on a shift because of no staff.
Any other questions from council? Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Could somebody move this briefing note for information, please? Councilor Jesselman, all in favor? Carry. So the next one is the Canadian Institute Call for Proposals. We'll let Councilor Jesselman speak on this.
Okay, planning on, but I can't. So two weeks ago, our ADM for forestry who's retired now, Bruce Mayer sent me the application form as he used to be the regular contact, he got the information. So he suggested this would be a good opportunity for Mackenzie County to put in the application. This is a Canada-wide program, it's Canada Institution Forestry. So it's been a few years since it's been in Alberta. And the last time, I think it was in White Court, yeah, it was in White Court. So just with all the 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 programs that the local forest companies have going here, the size of the operations, the commitment from First Nation communities for the different contracts that they have in place right now. Tawke First Nations has almost the biggest contract with Toko and the company's in place at this time. So it's pretty impressive to see how their program has been working. So all these things put together, you know, Bruce Mayer thought it would be a great opportunity, poured it on. So then I passed it on to Lisa Wardley from Mackenzie County. And then it was brought forward to tri-council to get support. They're currently putting a committee together for the application part of it to be submitted. This time, we're not guaranteed that we'll be successful. But I think if it's done well, the area has a huge advantage just from all the programs and the size of the harvesting program here in the winter time. So it'd be good. It sounds like the forest companies are all on board to support it. So I think it'd be a great opportunity for all the communities, whether it's Rainbow, High Level or the county. They'd all be a part of this going forward.
So we've been asked to provide a letter supporting submission of a proposal from tri-council. Does somebody want to make that motion? Councilor Lambert, all in favor? Carry. Here I thought it was a working group and I volunteered void. All right, correspondence for action, Hightower Public School request for waiving arena rental fees from June 5th to 10th.
Do you want me to talk about that?
No, I read it. Normally, what do we do with director roles?
Grad committee has had to recharge them. So last year, the invoice was for $2,109. So we only charged them just for the hours they were decorating as a host to the whole day, even though they couldn't actually rent it out. So we kept it as minimum as we could. And just the one day they got charged the full rate of $5.55. That came to $2,109 last year. I think previously there wasn't grad committee, maybe the school may have been doing it through that Portland School Division. And they had been using the MOU, but that doesn't hold for the grad committee, it doesn't apply to that. So we did charge last year.
So this year, I think it's back to, is the school doing it?
Grad committee.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so it'd be a charge.
So we usually, well, in the past, we have norm, we have allowed one day for nonprofit groups, right? So, yeah, we have. So my suggestion is we allow for one day for nonprofit, which would be the day they have their their grad ceremony and continue to charge them for the days that they decorate.
So the one-day nonprofit, is that?
So that's just a suggestion. Only one vote, as the deputy mayor says. Yes.
One day for the event?
This, I guess, sort of falls in line with the presentation earlier. I'm still a little confused as to what they were actually asking for in terms of support from the town. This is, this kind of thing is is an example of somewhere where we we can contribute. Mr. Dirksen's letter here states the grad class is in no way benefiting financially or otherwise from this rental. I was wondering, how many users of the arena do we have that are truly, I guess, in 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 terms of these one-offs, because even a nonprofit organization, they might be running a fundraiser, right? So they're still utilizing the facility for for financial gain. But this isn't, so do, is this, is it common that there would be a group such as this that it would be no way benefiting financially? Like they're not running their fundraisers or anything, they're actually having their grad, so.
Lots of nonprofits are are using, not gaining financially, but I think the ones that it would be, would be like the circus and stuff that are looking at making funds off it. Generally speaking, if you're booking for ball hockey or you're booking for a wedding or whatever the case may be, it's, you're not making anything off of it.
Theater troupe used to make a significant amount of money.
Yeah, but you're not benefiting, like, like it's not going to, you know.
No, I mean, but I mean, that just, that just adds to the consideration, I guess, in this particular event, but.
I think, like, I don't know what the town is going to do because it also has cost us money to put up banners. I don't even know if we've been approached ever.
Yes, we have been, and we did put 4,500 in the budget for 4,000 for new hardware and 500 for the lift. So and then there's also the time for three men from the public works crew to spend the day doing that as well to work for charity.
So, I mean, I think our contribution to the grad committee is
Significant.
Significant with $4,500 worth of hardware, cost of the lift to put up the banners as well as three men to do it.
And the hardware won't be every year. We're still short because they're anticipating a larger graduating cost, so they have to add on to the hardware. Once it's there, it should be covered.
I just, on that same note, so you've been working, because the group this year is a little uncoordinated. So I was involved with it earlier on, but so you have been working with a person within the grad committee?
Yeah.
And so we're all on the same page with the size and that, is that correct? Would that be correct?
Yes, just out of last week, we've been working on that fact.
It's because I've been coaching them.
Well, you were coaching, I was listening and I brought that forward. So no, that's good.
No, I sent a whole thing explaining how the hardware works and how the banners work and how they're put up and everything, so that there's that understanding, a whole visual. I sent a whole document.
Good.
So once we've got that straight, then I'll develop the MOU, but I wanted to wait what happened with these presentations to council to see what I was developing for that MOU.
Yes, Deputy Mayor.
Just my concern, the policy that we have right now is any not-for-profit group can approach the town, as the mayor said, and ask for one free use per year. And if we're suddenly making exceptions outside of that, the slippery slope is that eventually we just give away all community facilities for free to every group for however long. And, you know, I feel for the grad committee, it's a huge undertaking for the parents to put this on. We gave away a ton of trophies this year that we wanted support, so.
Yeah. Is that typical, like for? Sorry?
Councilor Lambert.
Sorry, is there any other events going on that week?
We've already booked in, whatever, whatever they will.
So there's nothing else booked in. So I, my suggestion, instead of waiving the one day, I would say, what if we waive their setup time? And then they pay for the day of the event.
Because if we waive their setup time, that's five days of $600. I, I think Deputy Mayor's right, sorry. We can't continue to give every day away, you know, like if a non-for-profit group. I know when we used to decorate for the spring fling, we would start two weeks ahead and the town charged us for it. And we got the one day through. So I think if we continue to give it away to everybody that decorates, we're going to lose a lot of money. I mean, we still have to pay the utilities and the and the use of the arena staff and, yes.
Well, I was just going to say that, yeah.
Well, I was just gonna say that, yeah, we, we supply town employees to help clean up, but put chairs away, so we're, we're contributing as well to this function.
Maybe that should just be pointed out again, how much contrib, contribution do you put in?
I can, I can contribute, I can point that out to the, I'll be that after next meeting.
Um, sorry?
Yes?
I was just kinda, is it, is it typical that school divisions don't participate in graduation functions? Like, it just seems like, like the Fort Millen School Division does not want to.
Oh, the school division will, but it has to be in the school.
They take part.
Oh, the ceremony.
And so everybody, yes?
So if, if the, if the function is held within their own facilities, then they contribute, okay?
So the, the thing was, this year's group chose not to do that, they wanted it in arenas.
Okay.
Lots of discussion worked on it.
So, like, the school would, would put on the whole function, but this committee did not want it in the school, they wanted it in the arena. Yes?
Just to add, like, I know from past years, I believe the school division has a budget of twenty-five hundred dollars
Mm-hmm.
for the ceremony.
Yeah.
And then everything else is taken care of by the committee. But from the conversation earlier with Ms. Silver, they said something about not having supper this year.
They're all decided to have their own individual suppers.
Because I mean, this letter from Mr. Dirksen here does say that they're looking to cover the cost of food only.
There, there will be snacks, snacks, none of you.
Okay. I mean, it's not like the last year's grad, it cost, I think, was it twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Including food rentals, everything, so.
And they're just having the ceremony there, that's it.
So, yeah, so they're not even having, so I get the event after, okay? So, yeah, the cost just don't add up, I mean.
So I think one of the reasons that this keeps coming back to council, it's a different committee every year, right? And so there's no continuity from one committee to the next, and so they'll be basking, but.
I think we need to come up with a policy, a grad policy.
Well, the other thing that compounds it too is, in the past, there's been very seasoned school, support teachers, like Ms. McCaskill, that have been a part of the organizing group. There's new people there this year that don't have the experience and the knowledge and understanding, so, yeah, they would have kept us on track in previous years and made recommendations, but this year, we're lacking that experience.
What's that, Mayor?
Yes?
The council, I give me direction to prepare an MOU in regard to the banners and that sort of thing, so sort of waiting to see kind of what direction it might be, and then I could make up an MOU that would just, that would be for the, I guess, the Fort Millen School Division, that would talk about the grad committee, how they might go different directions, and then what the town's goal would be, so we could discuss, like, size of banners, that kind of thing. They don't go with banners, no cost, if they do, you know, what that would be, what the size of the banners are, and then, I guess, our, what our contribution is for the arena, all those sorts of things could, could be developed within that.
Mm-hmm.
And then it's kind of straightforward for every year for the grad committee, so.
So what does council want to do? Someone come up, yes?
I support Deputy Mayor's recommendation.
Which was?
One, one day. That's my suggestion. Of the overall cost.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a question, huh?
Yes?
Maybe I wasn't paying attention, but, so they want five days, right?
I think it's six, five, six.
Six days.
Seven, sorry.
So what do we, so if they're in there, if we charge it from one day, or we give them one day free, and we charge them for the other five, five or six days, what do we charge them?
Well, the days rate was five fifty-five, so we would only charge them for the hours they were decorating. So we're actually, we were paying two seventy-seven for all the other days, because they were decorating, and we only charged them, this was last year, we only charged them five fifty-five for the one day they were there.
Do you want to amend that, charge them just the hours that are there on those seven other days?
But then it can't be booked, I'm sorry, it can't book to other people, no?
Yes?
But that then starts these precedents of charging hourly for different types of groups, and then at one, then at some point, we would be following the same thing. I think we have to have a nonprofit policy, which we already have. Maybe it has to be updated a little bit, maybe we want to update it a little bit to indicate those kind of things, but I guess it all depends on, you know, do they, can other, can other things happen? I guess it can't happen in that area that they're setting up, but, like, I guess not much just goes on in the arena anymore, because nobody rents the upstairs or anything anymore, do they, or do they?
Well, this is for the arena pad.
Yeah, like, that's just the price for the pad, yeah. I don't know, I think we have to be consistent with, with all the groups.
Oh, you're right, but I think this is the only group that takes seven days to decorate for an event that's held there.
True, and no, and it hasn't become a problem with others.
No, and if we develop that MOU this year, then they will know upfront that
Yeah.
what they're paying.
And then, and then it would also be, maybe, like, they, they, again, if they're not fully understanding the contributions we are making, then maybe it's just a little bit of re-education to the group.
Well, like you said, I can take that back to the group.
Counselor Lambert?
So just in regards to, like, can we not develop a policy or MOU, if, like, it's set a standard rate for the week for the grad class every year?
We could.
Instead of whatever, is it twenty-one oh nine, or around that?
That was the full cost that we charged them last year.
Yeah, we charged them five two thousand dollars every year.
But, like the mayor, Deputy Mayor says, it's a slippery slope, we can't treat each group differently. So if someone decides they want to have a wedding there and
Set up for seven days?
Set up for seven days, then we would have to charge them two thousand as well.
But what I'm saying is that we had some type of grad policy, so is this only in regards to the grads?
Let's not make this complicated. We give them one day off with the, with the reduced
Reduced rate.
Reduced rate.
And administration can come up with an MOU and bring it to council. I, I mean, that's, that's a discover, like, will that administration do that? We'll give them the direction to make a, a MOU and a policy, and for this time, because we have nothing
Correct.
We're flying by the seat of our pants, we'll go with the, or we will vote on what they, the, the resolution is. So do you want to repeat it?
The motion will be that we reduce the overall cost by one day for the hours that they use it, so what was it, three hours or?
So one free day?
Yes.
And then the hours that they use it to decorate.
They must use a standard of three hours.
If it's about five hours, maybe.
Okay.
So do we?
That's kind of what they asked for, right?
What's that?
That's kind of what they asked for.
They asked for
The whole thing?
The whole thing to be free from January fifth to tenth.
So what's up, we're good, too?
Doesn't matter, let the administration figure it out.
Okay.
All in favor? Carried. This guy doesn't even have a cute brush right now.
Who?
Um, Dirksen.
Oh, really? Okay.
All right. Correspondence for information. Oh, we won't, we'll be dead.
Yeah.
Correspondence for information, is there any? Can I have someone move it, please?
One fifteen, one fifteen, board.
Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carried. Does somebody want to move a juror, please? Counselor Libron, all in favor? Carried. Thank you for attending our council meeting tonight, have a good evening.